I'll call the meeting back to order. The next item on the agenda is a pledge of allegiance. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public forum. The first public forum is a sign up. I don't see anybody, but if anybody would like to speak, I'm more than happy to recognize them at this point. Seeing none, I close the public forum portion and move on to examination of minutes. Can I get a motion on the minutes of April 23?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we adopt the minutes of April 23 as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next item is President's report. I'll have enough to say a little later, so I'm not going to say anything on the President's report. Next item on the agenda is presentations of petitions, proclamations, and similar papers and matters. An acceptance of a proclamation dedicating a memorial square to Private First Class Paul James Gorman. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the town council, the audience here and audience at home. The administration's presentation on this matter will be, they'll provide some opening remarks, and then our Veteran Services Officer, Mr. Patrick George, will come up and provide a little more background. Subsequent to Mr. George's brief remarks, he'll introduce the sister of Private First Class Paul James Gorman, Bonnie, to speak of her brother, and then subsequent to that, the presentation, Mr. Patrick George, the town's Veteran Services Officer, will provide closing remarks on it. So by way of background, the correspondence, the issue before you is, correspondence was forwarded from Patrick George, the town's Veteran Services Officer, respectfully requesting a memorial square be dedicated to one of Private First Class Paul James Gorman from U.S. Marine Corps, who was killed in action on July 30, 1968, while honorably serving our country in Vietnam. The memorial square would be located at the corner of Emerson and Main Streets. The correspondence that's been forwarded by Mr. George's Veteran Services Officer is in accordance with the town council's Watertown memorials and dedication policy that was adopted back in July of 2016. So, Mr. President, at this point, members of council, I'd like to bring forward the town's Veteran Services Officer, Mr. Patrick George.
Patrick, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mr. President, and the rest of the town council. Mr. Gorman, it was brought to my attention back in the middle of April that there was not a memorial square named after him. He was a Marine who was killed in action four days following his 20th birthday, and I believe this was a situation that was simply overlooked, and I'm happy that, and I'd like to thank everyone here, that we're able to sort of remedy this as quickly as we have. Jim Pendergrass, who is a member of the Shut Detachment, initially brought this to my attention. I'm glad he was here, and he is joined with Joe Darian, a fellow Watertown High School graduate with Mr. Gorman, who they both took the train down to Paris Island when they weren't ready for boot camp. I'm fortunate enough that I got to fly down there and avoid an 11-hour train ride when I went to Paris Island myself. For way of background, I would be remiss if I did not introduce Bonnie Gorman, who is going to do an infinitely better job describing who Paul Gorman was and the Watertown that Paul Gorman knew. Don't further do it, I'd like to introduce Bonnie.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. This is a great honor. Here's a picture of Paul and myself. We were both in the military in the '60s, paying for our college education. Maybe I'll pass that around, it's sliding around. At any rate, we have been a Gold Star family since Paul's death, and he was killed, as you heard, post-Kisane in Vietnam, as were hundreds of thousands of others during those wars. And we, as many Gold Star families have been affected, my mother had a massive heart attack and eventually died as a result of that war and the death of Paul. And so, many Gold Star families have experienced the losses like that, physical and emotional losses as well. And we are just coming off of the fact that my nephew, who was a 20-year Marine veteran with multiple tours of duty in the Middle East, has just committed suicide. So, we really have, we have an obligation to our soldiers, from my perspective, is to bring peace and justice to the soldiers and keep them home. But, so I do work a lot on public policy issues. I myself am a nurse. I went over to a Vietnam air evac network in mid-'60s and was over, well, I was there totally for five years, so that paid for my schooling. Vietnam came along as a surprise after our sign up in '63. But we do have a wonderful opportunity to honor Paul and my family, that we grew up on Emerson Road, that was his only house that he ever lived in, and he and my parents are buried at Ridge Lawn, so it's very appropriate to be able to do that. But we thank you for the opportunity and the honor, and we'll have more opportunities to share detailed information about Paul. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Vice President Bittirelli to read the proclamation before we vote on it, please.
Whereas Paul James Gorman was lovingly raised along with his four siblings, Jack, Eugene, Bob, and Bonnie, by John and Madeline Gorman, who made their home on Emerson Road in Watertown, Massachusetts. And whereas the Gorman children attended Watertown Schools, were active in the community, and both Paul and Bonnie Gorman were called to service in defense of the United States of America during the Vietnam War. And whereas the youngest Gorman son, Paul, enlisted in the Marine Corps September 12, 1967, and proceeded to Paris Island, South Carolina, to begin training as a Marine Corps 0341 mortarman, Private First Class Gorman deployed overseas with Gulf Company, 2nd Battalion, 4th Marines, 9th MAB FM FPA-C, and on July 30, 1968, was killed in action while assaulting an enemy position in support of casualty evacuation operations. Whereas on July 30, 1968, the President of the United States of America, pursuant to authority vested in him by Congress, awarded the Purple Heart, established by General George Washington at Newburgh, New York, on August 7, 1782, posthumously to Private First Class Paul J. Gorman, for military merit and for wounds received in action resulting in his death on July 30, 1968. And whereas Private First Class Gorman is buried in Ridge Lawn Cemetery in Watertown, Massachusetts, alongside his loving parents. Now therefore be resolved, excuse me, you know, Mr. President, sorry. Now therefore be resolved that the town council of the city known as the Town of Watertown, hereby honors and recognizes Private First Class Paul James Gorman for his ultimate sacrifice for this country by naming the intersection of Main Street and Emerson Road in his honor, Private First Class Paul James Gorman Memorial Square.
Thank you. Thank you. Can I get a motion on the proclamation?
Motion to accept.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Thank you for bringing this to our attention. And looking forward to seeing the dedication move forward. I'd like to get a motion now to move up all of the items in Section 10, please.
Don't move.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. 10A is a resolution authorizing, resolution approving the acceptance and expenditure of a gift of funds in the amount of $1,630 from the Costello family for the purpose of awarding scholarships to assist Watertown families with tuition costs of the popular youth summer camp, Camp Piquocet, facilitated by the Recreation Department. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. You just indicated, Mr. President, again, I too are very pleased to inform you of the Costello family has offered to make a generous contribution in the amount of $1,630 for the purpose of awarding scholarships to assist Watertown families with tuition costs of the popular youth summer camp, Camp Piquocet. As indicated in the correspondence from the Costello family, the donation is being made to honor the memory of the late Philip Costello. At this point, Mr. President, the administration's presentation would be, Mr. Santola will speak, and then will firmly introduce a family member, but just prior to bringing Mrs. Santola forward for the folks here and at home, pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53A, any expenditure gift of funds need the approval of the town manager and the town council. So, Mr. President, members of the council, Mr. Peter Santola, the Director of Recreation.
Thank you, Mr. Driscoll, town council members, town council president. Mr. Costello was one of my mentors and just a wonderful man and a leader in the community, and I appreciate you taking the opportunity to allow us to bring forward this donation. Had the pleasure of receiving a call from Mr. Phil Costello, his son, and we talked about a potential donation, so thank you to the Costello family. And I'd like at this point to bring up Sean Costello, say a few nice words about his granddad.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Manager, and the rest of the town council. We appreciate you having us here this evening. We know you have a lot of business on your agenda, so I'll try not to be too long-winded. But before I launch into it, just a couple of things I want to say about my grandfather. I have two things to say, is that first of all, I know I speak on behalf of my family who are here, when I say that it's an honor to have been here for that last vote and presentation. My grandfather was a United States Marine who served overseas, so it's an honor to be here for that presentation, for that vote. And we also want to say that we know my grandfather would be incredibly proud of Mr. Santola and the work that he is doing with the Watertown Recreation Department. I don't think I have to tell you folks how incredibly lucky you are to have a guy like Peter Santola running that department and doing such wonderful things with it, and we see our grandfather's legacy continue through his good work. So, thank you, Mr. Santola. I'm here with a few members of my family, just very quickly, my father, Phil Costello, my uncle Brian Costello, I think a lot of you probably know, my aunt Julie O'Neil, and my cousin Jessica Costello. The three siblings all grew up in Watertown. Jessica and I did not, but Jessica works in Watertown, so Watertown is very prevalent in all of our lives still to this day. As I said, my grandfather, Phil Costello, was a United States Marine. He was born and raised here in Watertown on Purvis Street, and he was somebody who, you could tell just with any interaction that you had with him, that Watertown was in his blood. He did a whole lot of different things throughout the town of Watertown throughout pretty much his entire life. When he came back from serving, he decided to run for school committee. So, he was a member of the school committee back then in his late twenties, which was pretty rare to see somebody at that young an age be elected to office back in the 40s and 50s. So, he was in his late twenties when he was elected to the school committee and served two terms, which to me is something very special, as I'm in my second term of my school committee in my town, and it's something that I try and carry forward in his memory. But, of course, his greatest joy came from working directly with students. He was a teacher in Watertown Public Schools for 24 years, pretty often voted the most popular teacher at his school. He was a coach as well, and he got to know so many kids throughout his coaching career. Even if he didn't know how to play the sport, he'd coach it if they needed a coach, and he got to know so many kids through that. But the reason we're before you today is because we want to make a donation to one of his strongest living legacies, which is Camp Piquocet. He founded Camp Piquocet and actually wrote and performed the theme song, which, Mr. Santola, correct me if I'm wrong, has still played at the camp to this day. Music was a big part of his life as well. For nine years, excuse me, seven years, he was the director of the Watertown Recreation Department. In that role, he expanded the department's offerings of year-round programs from about 40 to over 100. He also expanded youth basketball and began the state's first year-round athletic programming for those with intellectual disabilities, something that we're all very proud of. Of course, we're here because Camp Piquocet is something that he cared so deeply for, and we want to be able to see young people in Watertown enjoy that for many years to come. We got together on Christmas, and we decided, instead of buying each other Christmas presents, that we were going to make donations and donate whatever we could to Camp Piquocet and ensure that children in Watertown can enjoy all that has to offer. So, I'd like to thank you for supporting those services at Camp Piquocet and supporting all of the services at the Recreation Department, all the work that you do. I know it's no easy task, but it goes, it does not go unnoticed, and I told my family that I'd close. As we were sitting there, we looked at the town seal, and of course, the first thing that catches our eyes, it says Piquocet right on your town seal, right? And that's pretty obvious, but what only my dad picked up on at first is that the year that Watertown was founded is there too, and that's the exact amount that the donation that we're giving is today, $1,630, which is interesting, ironic, but I think that's Mr. C. pulling some strings upstairs. So, thank you for the opportunity to be with you today and speak on behalf of the greatest man I've ever known, greatest man I will ever know, a man that I hope to model myself after, my family hopes to model themselves after, and a man whose legacy we hope will continue with this money for many years to come for students who need it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your donation.
Thank you very much, Sean. How about a nice hand? Well said. Get him on our school committee, did a wonderful job. I respectfully request your, I'm sorry, Mr. Town Manager, Mr. Town President, Council President, I respectfully request your favorable consideration in accepting this gift of funds for the purpose of Piquocet scholarships for families on behalf of Mr. Phil Costello's family and family. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to, on the resolution approving the acceptance of the gift?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the acceptance and expenditure of gift of funds.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those, Councilor Donato?
I just wanted to thank the Costello family for this generous donation. I myself was a Camp Piquocet kid, and my brother Brian is the current director of Camp Piquocet, so thank you very much for your generous donation. I know how much the kids in town really value Camp Piquocet, and this is going to help a lot of kids spend a great summer, so thank you very much.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Next item is a resolution authorizing a transfer of $182,950 from the fiscal year 2019 debt retirement short-term interest account to the transfer to Capital Projects' police mobile data account in order to move forward with the replacement of the mobile data system. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. The administration's presentation tonight, I provide an opening of background information for the folks here and at home. Subsequent to that, respectfully asked Chief Michael Lahn will then speak on the need to replace the mobile data system soon in order to avoid any loss of crucial operating functions, and then subsequent to Chief Lahn speaking, I will close with the proposed, and speak to reviewing the funding for the proposed transfer of funds. So, by way of background, back on January 31 of this year, the proposed fiscal year 20 to 24 capital improvement program was submitted to town council. Subsequent to that, on March 12, the Honorable Town Council adopted 29 conceptual recommendations on the fiscal year 20 to 24 capital improvement program. One of the conceptual recommendation reads in part as follows, "The proceed with the fiscal year 2019 proposed loan order for $183,000 for the police department equipment consisting of a mobile data system replacement." So, at this point, Mr. President, members of the council, I'd like to bring forward Chief Michael P. Lahn to speak just briefly on the correspondence, kind of updating what he forwarded to us regarding the need to replace the mobile data system soon in order to avoid the loss of any crucial operating function. So, Mr. President, Chief Lahn.
Good evening, Mr. Manager, Mr. President, Town Council. Thank you for having me here tonight. So, just briefly to explain this, this is the 17 computers in the cars that the officers use in the cars, and we have one laptop. And basically, we have a computer-aided dispatch system in the police station where the reports and everything's dispatched, and the issue is between these two talking to each other. Those systems in the cars, over the years, we've used for so much more. They receive and transmit dispatch calls, communication between the cars out in the street. Now we have the ability to write reports in the cars, so that keeps officers on the street. This is the system they write them with. They also have the ability to run plates. Now, we bring pictures up that come up, if we run a plate, the picture will come up that's used every night multiple times when people give us false names. So, this system is very important to us. The problem is, every time we have to do an upgrade for our IMC system, the computer system in the station, this system in the cars cannot handle it. So, basically, what all the computer people are telling me right now, they're afraid to even do an upgrade because the system's going to crash. So, basically, I think if action is not taken soon, the Patrol Division will lose, you know, and this crashes, they're going to lose the ability to have all these functions. So, your consideration is deeply appreciated for this.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Just finishing up, Mr. President, is a follow-up to the conceptual recommendation. The intent had been to bring forward a proposed loan order for the mobile data system replacement. At this time, monies are available to fund the replacement from the debt retirement short-term interest account. As a result, they're not borrowing for some planned items in fiscal year 2019. The utilization of unspent debt retirement account monies for acquisition- The utilization of unspent debt retirement account monies for acquisition of capital equipment is consistent in one of the Honorable Town Council's ongoing budget policy guidelines to make annual capital expenditures equal to at least seven and a half, eight percent of the operating budget in order to maintain and improve its infrastructure, facility, and equipment. So, therefore, Mr. President, members of the council, I ask for your favorable consideration in the proposed transfer before you for $182,950 from the fiscal year 2019 Debt Retirement Short Term Interest Account to the fiscal year 2019 Transfer to Capital Projects Police Mobile Data System. Mr. President?
Thank you. Can I get a motion on the transfer, please?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the transfer of $182,950.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilor Felkoff?
Yes.
Councilor Felton?
Yes.
Councilor Cornelis?
Yes.
Councilor Palumbo?
Yes.
Councilor Petterelli?
Yes.
Councilor Woodland?
Yes.
Councilor Baze?
Yes.
Councilor Donato?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. Next item is 10C, which is a resolution authorizing a transfer of $242,916 from the fiscal year 2019 Debt Retirement Short Term Interest Account to the fiscal year 2019 Transfer to Capital Projects Library Doors Account in order to move forward with the replacement of the library's sliding doors. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, this is a follow-up to the submission of the fiscal year 20 to '24 Capital Improvement Program. Again, back in March, Town Council adopted the 29 conceptual recommendations on the fiscal year 20 to '24 CIP. One of the conceptual recommendations reads as follows, "Proceed with the fiscal year 2018 proposed loan order for $120,000 for library improvements to replace sliding doors." As I indicated three weeks ago, tonight, the fiscal year, in the fiscal year 2020 budget message, the above, the library improvements for the $120,000 was bid, and the low bid was significantly higher than the projected $120,000, and the project was being reviewed at the time to determine how best to proceed. So, follow-up to that conceptual recommendation, correspondence was forwarded from Mr. Tracy regarding the results of the bid opening for the project, along with a request to move forward the library improvements. The two bids that were received for the project were $299,000 and $242,916. At this point, Mr. President, members of the council, I'd like to bring forward Ms. Leon Call, the library director, to kind of provide the background to this kind of a long process of looking out to address the sliding doors at the library. So, Mr. President, members of the council, Ms. Leon Call, the library director.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. Replacement of the existing sliding doors at the library has been a lengthy process, as stated. It started as a simple replacement of the doors with the same type of door. But as we moved through the process of finding a suitable replacement, other issues came to light, namely, energy efficiency and the comfort of staff and patrons. Taking an average of 35,000 visitors a month to the library, the existing doors have opened and closed over 10 million times. They were the original doors in 2006. When we built the building, we had no expectation of that type of traffic, and the doors were never meant for that kind of volume. We've had to do significant repairs over the years, and it's past due to replace them. So, we knew we had to find doors that could withstand a large volume of traffic. We also took into consideration that we wanted to be more energy efficient and decrease the cold that came in the winter, during the winter and heat in the summer. Often, the circulation does staff have to wear their coats while working on cold days. Because of the short length of the vestibules, both sets of the current sliding doors are open at the same time often, allowing the cold air in. And because the sets of doors are opposite each other across the long hallway, a sort of wind tunnel exists. With the help of the on-call architects and the building inspector, we looked at many options. The solution that would bring the greatest energy efficiency, a large revolving door like the ones at Jordan Furniture, wouldn't fit into the space. Creating that kind of space would involve a major capital project. We then looked at a smaller revolving door with a traditional door next to it, but decided that no one would likely use a revolving door. We also looked at several non-door solutions for the hallway, but none seemed appropriate or likely to be especially effective. The solution that library trustees ultimately voted to recommend is the following, two sets of traditional swing doors at both entrances. Each will have ADA-compatible automatic door openers. At the rear entrance, which the majority of people use, the vestibule will be extended to lessen the likelihood that both sets of doors will be open at the same time. Traditional swing doors are less likely than sliding doors also to be open at the same time. We'll also install additional heating in the circulation area to make it more comfortable for staff and patrons. Also of note is that the project was bid with a stipulation that the library will remain open throughout. We'll redirect patrons to the Thaxer Street door when one of the entrances is closed for the work. So, without doing major renovation of the entrances, we feel that this solution is most likely to produce the best results. So, thank you for your consideration of this transfer.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. And then, finally, again, the original intent was to move forward a proposed loan order for the library improvements. As indicated with the mobile data for the Police Department, monies are available to fund the improvement for the debt, from the debt short-term interest account. As a result, they're not borrowing for some planned items in fiscal year 2019. Therefore, Mr. President, members of the Town Council, I respectfully ask your favorable consideration in the proposed transfer of $242,916. Mr. President?
Thank you. Can I get a motion on the transfer?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the transfer of $242,916.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
Yes.
Councilor Felton?
Thank you, Mr. President, and excited to see you moving forward on this. I just wanted to thank you for all your work. I know you, as you mentioned, a lot of diligence went into this, and including Commission on Disabilities, excited to see the improvements. I'm assuming it doesn't affect at all the timing of the alarm system of checked materials?
No, that's, that's further in, by the, yeah, closer to the elevator, yeah.
Councilor Felkoff?
Thank you. Thank you. I just couldn't quite picture what you were describing. These will be glass doors?
Yes.
But they'll, they won't be the sliding doors that we have now?
Exactly. And at the rear entrance, the vestibule will be extended, so you'll see a further extension of like the glass vestibule farther out, almost to the end of the canopy at the back. So, it'll be one set of doors there, and then one set of doors where there currently are the interior sliding doors.
So, currently, there's two sets of doors in the rear and one set of doors in the front of the library?
Two.
Two, two in both places. I couldn't quite picture that. Okay. And, okay, thanks.
Councilor Cornelis?
Thank you so much. So, referencing the rear entrance from the parking lot, following up on Councilor Felkoff, the vestibule is going to be extended out, not in?
Yes, exactly.
All right, so there are two steps or so in the vestibule area?
Still in the interior. Those steps will stay, as will the ramp. So, that the interior doors will be basically at the same place where the interior slider door is now. And then, that exterior slider door, which will become a traditional, traditional door, will extend out almost to the end of the canopy. And then, there'll be glass on that side near where the sidewalk extends, so right there, there'll be a glass wall to enclose that area.
And these are going to be traditional swing doors, two of them, I presume?
Yes.
And any automation in them, or are they all basically manual?
No, there'll be, there'll be a button to push, so you can open them with the automatic door opener.
In both sets of doors?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Councilor Palumbo?
Just a quick, as you were describing it, the place where people can return books and...
Yes.
Would that then be inside the vestibule?
That will be inside, yes.
So, the people, will people, won't be able to do that then, late at night, or any...
They will be able to. We'll keep the outside doors open.
Open, is that what you'll do?
But the inside will be still locked.
I wasn't sure you were going to keep the outside open.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Councilor Felton?
Yes.
Councilor Cornelis?
Yes.
Councilor Palumbo?
Yes.
Councilor Petterelli?
Yes.
Councilor Woodland?
Yes.
Councilor Baze?
Yes.
Councilor Donato?
Yes.
Councilor Felkoff?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes, thank you. Back to the agenda. Thank you, and thanks for getting those done.
Thank you.
Item number nine is a public hearing and vote on a proposed loan order authorizing the town treasurer with the approval of the town manager to borrow and/or expend monies in the amount of $12,441,016 under Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Subsection 7.7, or pursuant to any other enabling authority for the purpose of paying costs of designer services related to the design, construction, addition to, and/or renovation of three elementary schools. And I won't read the rest of it because it's regular language. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight's, the presentation would be as follows. I'll provide an opening and provide background information for folks at home and here. Subsequent to that, the Honorable Town Council President, Mr. Sedaris, will speak as the School Building Committee Chairman. Subsequent to Mr. Sedaris speaking, he'll formally introduce the Principal for AI3 Architects, Mr. Dunlap. And then, subsequent to Mr. Dunlap's presentation, I will speak to the financing of the proposed $12,000.4 million borrowing. And then, the Council President would open up for a public hearing. So, for, by way of background, back in 2017, the Watertown Public Schools had issued a request for services for an owner's project manager services and also a request for designer services for design, construction, addition, renovation of our three elementary schools as part of the Building for the Future Initiative. Back in October of 17, the Town Council appropriated $4 shy of $150,000 for an OPM. And then, in December, the Town Council approved a proposed loan order totaling $1,378,599 for the purpose of paying designer services for the design, construction, addition, or renovation of the three elementary schools. Given those two items back in 2000, in late 2017, it was necessary to move forward the establishment of a school building committee. Thirteen appointments to the committee were made in March of 2018, including the Honorable Town Council President Mark Sedaris, Town Council Vice President Vincent Petterelli, School Committee Chairman John Ports, and School Committee Member Lindsay Moska. The committee is the representative of the town in all dealings with the architect. Jumping all the way to December of 2018, the Honorable Town Council adopted and ranked the fiscal year 2020 Budget Policy Guidelines. The top-ranked fiscal year 2020 Budget Policy Guideline 2A reads as follows, "Continue to develop Building for the Future Initiative funding in collaboration with the School Building Committee for the three elementary school project by formalizing the proposal to use funds directed for the retirement appropriation when the pension fund is fully funded, while also paying down the OPED liability and for the MSBA high school project with the proposed debt exclusion funding." During the fiscal year 2020 preliminary budget overview, I had indicated the School Building Committee has been working tirelessly to review conceptual design options for the three elementary schools and an effort to ultimately select a preferred design option that's in the best interests of the town, the taxpayers, and the successful education of our children. I'll let the Town Council President Sedaris, who also serves as the School Building Committee Chairman, kind of speak more on the efforts of the School Building Committee in a moment. Just moving forward in January, end of January of 2019, the School Building Committee did endorse a conceptual and schematic design, including all-new construction of the Hosmer and Kuntz Schools and a comprehensive renovation in addition to the Lowell School. These projects are a part of a long-term vision of providing outstanding education, recreation, and healthy neighborhoods throughout Watertown, will serve the town for many decades. The approximately $170 million cost estimate included, the total project cost represents all the building site work, furniture technology, and all associated costs of completed and occupied facilities. A week later, on Jan, at the end of January, I had respectfully included $170 million within the fiscal year 20 to '24 Capital Improvement Program. Subsequent to that, the Committee on Budget and Fiscal Oversight adopted conceptual recommendations. Conceptual Recommendation 18 reads as follows, "Concur with the decision to proceed with the Building for Future Initiative of $170 million for the three elementary schools' project funding within the confines of Proposition 2.5." Given all of that, Mr. President, members of the council, I had brought forward three weeks ago tonight, the proposed loan order for the $12,441,16, which represents the designer services, include a scope of service associated with design development through completion phases. And at this point, that would be the opening remark, setting the, from a background standpoint of view, at this point, Mr. Town Council President, I'd like to have you speak now as the School Building Chairman.
I'm going to do something I normally don't do, and I'm going to go to the podium. This is important. Thanks for allowing me, Mr. Manager, to take my turn here. I'm speaking to the members of the council, the members of the community tonight as the School Building Committee Chairperson, and I want to give a little bit of a background, how we got here, where we are, and introduce Scott, who's been key to getting us where we want to be with our schools. This is basically the first time that this full council is going to see where we are, and I think it's important. Also, this evening, this is the first significant commitment to making these elementary school projects come to fruition. So, I'm going to start by saying thank you for allowing this to happen. Thank you for your support through the Budget and Fiscal Oversight Committee and your budget rankings. I do think it's very important for this community, and I want to emphasize the fact that we are doing this without an override. That's also significant. And it also shows that the financial management that we've had, the restraint that we've had through the years of people saying that we didn't support our schools, or we shouldn't pay off our retirement. Well, we did support our schools, and we did support, pay off our retirement, which will be paid off on July 1st. So, all of those are very important. I want to thank my building committee, five of which members are here this evening, for all the hard work since March of last year. We've met many, many times. We've met at the schools, we've met here. We really have done a lot of work to get to this point. So, I want to thank them for their commitment to this project and to the goals that we've set forth. As you're well aware, when we first brought Scott in, we were working with figures that the manager continues to discuss, which were $80 to $120 million. While the building committee was meeting, we found that $80 to $120 million didn't get us a whole lot. We started looking at renovations, then we said, well, why would we leave some windows here and not change all the windows? And it became more apparent with Scott's expertise, and I find that Scott has been key to getting us where we are today, it became apparent that $80 to $120 million wasn't going to cut it. So, I asked Scott, and the building committee talked to Scott about, let's take a look at what it would be if we designed, let's say, one new school, maybe the condo for the Hosmer. Where would we be? And then, it became apparent that maybe we should look at two new schools. And we didn't want to touch the Lowell because of the historic aspect, that school is a very beautiful building. And it became, when we started doing analysis of the numbers, the difference between what we were going to get by doing renovations and what we're going to get by doing new schools, that delta became very, very small. It's a, it's a big delta, but it's, it became much smaller, and much more apparent to us that this was a direction that we should be moving in. It also gives us an opportunity, and we, and through this whole process, we've been hearing from several people in the community, groups in community that are concerned about sustainability. We created a sustainability subcommittee, which John Ports chairs, and they've been working. We're actually now at a point where we're looking at potentially net-zero buildings and lead silver and above buildings, the new, two new buildings, which is a huge accomplishment, working within the budget that, with the parameters that have been set by the manager using Scott's real numbers. I think you're going to be excited tonight. Scott's going to show you where we started out, what we were looking at, and where we are as of last week. are as of last week. It shows you some really nice designs. I will say that when we started out, some of the neighbors in the areas were coming to these meetings very frustrated. And when Scott started developing these designs, the neighbors are now, as of last week, I asked one of them, who was one of the direct neighbors at the Hosmer, what do you think? I love it, I love, they continue to say how much they love this. So I think we've done, as a committee, we've done a good job trying to get people engaged, and with Scott's help, we've been addressing the issues that continue to be raised and the sustainability issues. We got a letter from Watertown for Climate Change thanking us for our efforts to try to do what we're doing for all of the environmental issues that we're facing. So at this point, I want to introduce Scott Dunlap, who's been here before from AI3, and I'm very confident that you'll be happy once you hear his presentation. And I'm favor, I'm asking, from my perspective, for your favorable consideration to move forward with this loan order, to begin the process, and really set our schools on the path that we want to go. Thank you. Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Also known to me as Mr. Building Committee Chair. Members of the town council. Mr. Town Manager, thank you. Give me just a moment. Plugged in.
Thank the Lord.
As the, as Building Committee Chairman Sedaris mentioned, it certainly has been a long road and an enormous amount of time invested by the building committee in taking a look at every possible option for the town of Watertown. And certainly know that I've seen each of your faces on numerous occasions, joining us at the neighborhood forums and at building committee meetings and at various community input opportunities. So I want to thank you for all that. It's, it's really difficult to describe the move that the town of Watertown is preparing to do, preparing to make with the three elementary schools, because it really is a model for many towns to, to follow. I've been doing this for almost thirty years. I've worked all over the Commonwealth, all over New England, and all over the world. And I have to say that the commitment that is being promote, proposed for the three elementary schools in terms of restoring the neighborhoods, returning green space, creating an environment that is much better for each of these Watertown neighborhoods, the educational commitment in terms of the innovative environments that are going to be created for teaching and learning, the sustainability standard that's being established in terms of placing net zero as a goal is, is almost unheard of. It's becoming something that a lot of cities and towns want to do and want to accomplish. It appears Watertown may be on the brink of doing that. So I just can't say enough about the direction that the building committee has proposed and the direction that this council has continued to support. As, as you know, after all of the master planning and all of the discussion and all the years of prior planning, in two thousand seventeen, the current process was launched. As the council president and building committee chair indicated, we spent the end of two thousand seventeen and early two thousand eighteen completing some initial work in the form of site investigations, topographical and boundary surveys, geotechnical work on the site, soil characterization, really just gathering data on the site. And then as the building committee formed in early two thousand eighteen and began meeting, we started developing conceptual options for each of the projects. And I'm going to show a few samples of some of the options tonight that in no way represents the various options that were considered. Almost no stone went unturned in taking a look at the possibilities on all the sites. And I'm going to be showing just some three-dimensional modeling of those options, but keep in mind that the building committee took a deep dive into every single option and looked at detailed floor plans, phasing options, detailed costs. There was an enormous amount of time spent on every single option, vetting it out with the neighbors and the neighborhood, the community members, to talk about the advantages and disadvantages in parking and circulation and green space and saving trees, and the list goes on and on in terms of the number of items that were investigated as part of each one of those conceptual options. We continued to do that, ultimately leading to some official neighborhood forums. Certainly, all of the building committee members were open for public input, but we went out to the individual neighborhoods and solicited input in, in the fall. And then we rolled into a preferred schematic phase where we were looking in more detail at all those conceptual options. And then ultimately, as the building committee chair indicated, we went back, we were asked by the building committee to go back and take an even more detailed look at some prior discussions on the possibility of new construction on the Cuniff and the Hosmer site, and even the possibility of reducing the amount of construction on the Lowell site to improve the overall quality of that project. So all of that culminated in, in January of this year. I'll quickly just show some of the Cuniff conceptual options to give you a sense of all the things that were considered. Again, this is just a sampling of some of the options, and the building committee dove into a lot more detail on each of them. Sample of a renovation addition option at the Cuniff site, where we were proposing to leave a portion of the existing building and expand it. A different variety of that option. Some of the new construction options. At one point in time, we were exploring the possibility of leaving the existing Cuniff and trying to construct completely outside of it with a new facility. Same thing in a different arrangement. Partially constructing in the footprint of the existing Cuniff. A variation on renovations in multiple locations and additions surrounding several different locations on the site. Another variation on renovation. Hosmer, same thing, leaving a portion of the Hosmer and doing a new addition. New addition's always represented by the piece in white, I should have pointed out. New addition with a different arrangement, elimination of the Z-shaped building, all-new construction outside of the current footprint of the Hosmer. Addition more compact and directly adjacent to the, the Hosmer, the existing Hosmer with the demolition of the Z-shaped building. All-new construction at the Hosmer, unfortunately displacing a key area of the playfields, but an option that was considered. Another all-new construction at the Hosmer, unfortunately not a very popular location in the end, and some compromises associated with that option. More detailed forming amassing of a proposed new construction option at the Hosmer. The Lowell, we considered multiple addition locations and configurations, the front and the rear, each side. Each side and more addition at the rear. Ultimately, after evaluating all of those, and again, I would point out that there was a lot more detailed information considered and many more options considered, but just to give you a sense of that. And then we moved into what Chairman Sedaris described as a mode of looking at the possibility of all-new construction on the Cuniff site. In this case, if we were able to do all-new construction, move the building closer to the cemetery, free up an enormous amount of additional green space, recreate all the parking, recreate all the stormwater drainage on the site, do a completely new site package, do a building that would support a large photovoltaic array in the form of solar power, do lead gold potentially building in terms of energy efficiency, configure everything in an ideal fashion on the interior in terms of supporting 21st century education. This was the scheme that was reviewed at the Cuniff. Then at the Hosmer, we did the same thing and said all-new construction, place it anywhere you want to get the most perfect fit on the site and create the most green space and the best circulation and the best parking around the site and the best possible educational conditions for the students. And this was, in fact, the scheme and the model for that. At the Lowell, condensing the addition to the smallest possible addition and still meeting all the educational program, slight adjustment in enrollment, enrollment there and a shift allowed us to free up, again, a lot of green space that was previously going to get displaced, avoid an addition in this area, and this became the preferred scheme for the Lowell. And then as we moved further into schematic design for those, they began to get very much more real. Here, here you can see the evolving site plan for the Hosmer site. We've got new building, learning gardens, outdoor learning courtyards, completely able to save existing playfields, in fact, recreating new playfields in better orientation, new play areas in better orientations, much more green space in that neighborhood turned over to the neighborhood surroundings, better drop-off and circulation around the site. Every possible improvement included as part of that ultimate option that was selected. This is the exterior as we're moving on into design development now. This is literally that building viewed from this parking and drop-off area. So we're looking at the new K-25 entry and the new early childhood learning entry, because this is early childhood learning building, this is K-25 building. We're looking at the fronts of those from this green space or this play area in this image. So you see the new K-25 entry, the new early childhood learning center entry. See the glass bridge connecting the two buildings, the outdoor learning courtyard between the two buildings. This is looking from Mount Auburn Street. We're up close to the building, but if you were looking from Mount Auburn Street and you walked across the fields and you were standing in approximately this location, looking at the building, that's the view that you're getting here, where we've got the academic core, we've got the art room on this end, we've got the dining area with some outdoor student dining located here in the beginning of the playfields. At the Cuniff site, the newly proposed building minimizing its footprint and going to three stories allowed for much more green space, better parking and circulation. It also allowed us to create this building much more energy efficient. Again, a large roof platform for photovoltaics array in an effort to make this a net-zero building. And we, we say net-zero, I should explain. Net-zero essentially means that the building will attempt to produce enough energy from its photovoltaic or its solar array on the roof to power the entire building. At the Lowell, again, a reminder that we consolidated the addition to this location, a small addition in the rear, outdoor learning courtyard created between the addition and the existing original primary facade of the building. And then you can see what that actually looks and feels like here. Obviously, the original building. This is the proposed addition. It ends up being a learning commons for students surrounded by classrooms in this particular area, then an outdoor learning courtyard with the learning gardens. And then this is the building as you move on past, you could see, if you could go a little further, you'd see the existing library and media center on that side of the building. What happens next? With the, with the council's support, the project would move on into design development. So we're approximately here. We're another year away from completing design development and construction documents for all three projects. At that point in time, all three projects would be complete in terms of their design and documentation and ready to bid. The current schedule proposes approximately two years for the construction of the Hosmer, approximately a year for the construction of the Cuniff, and approximately eighteen months for the Lowell, a large portion of which would overlap with the Cuniff construction. That would be the addition at the Lowell. I would point out that the building committee is also exploring options for possibly accelerating this schedule and having, in particular, the Lowell potentially finished earlier, but it's a little too early to make any commitment on that until we have a chance to look at the much more detailed design, phasing, look at the impacts, et cetera, on what that would be. But always exploring options for maintaining quality and maintaining a safe school environment, but completing the projects as quickly as possible. So looking at that now, if this schedule were to be held as is, the assumption is all projects would be completed in the summer of two thousand twenty-four, with the last one being the Lowell as it wrapped up. I know that's an enormous amount of information in a very short period of time. Thank you for allowing me to go through it.
Okay, before we open it up, I want to go back to the manager for the financing portion. Mr. Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, members of the town council. First, I'd like to say the School Building Committee Chairman and the council president reminded me about the eighty to one hundred and twenty million dollars. I still would prefer the eighty to one twenty to the... [laughter] But that being said, this is a very, very exciting night. And before talking about how we're going to pay for this, I need to thank several groups or four thank yous, if you will, before I talk about financing. The first one is the gentleman who just finished the presentation, Mr. Dunlap. In all the years that I've sat in this chair, it's been few and far between, and I don't think it ever has been where we've had somebody come in and basically provide with full confidence to this community and having people rally around his thoughts. He's very, very bright. He is very personable, but he is really talented. So that's my first thank you. The second thank you is to the members of the School Building Committee. We talked about how, indicated before, how they worked tirelessly to review conceptual design options for the three elementary schools in an effort to ultimately select a preferred design option that is in the best interest of the town, the taxpayers, and the successful education of our children. Think about it. They became in existence in March of two thousand eighteen, met twenty times, had three community forums, and Mr. Dunlap showed the, how it morphed from elementary, from renovating into what we end up with two new schools and renovating the expansion of the third school. So again, the work they've done, they've done their homework, they've done, they've had presentations, the council president alluded to, hearing from residents that were not pleased with the Hosmer neighbors that seem to be very pleased now. The next group I want to thank is the Honorable Town Council for their leadership on two items I touched upon before, the fiscal year twenty twenty budget policy guideline, which certainly was ranked number one and talked about continue to develop Building for the Future Initiative funding in collaboration with the School Building Committee for the three elementary schools. Additionally, following up to that, the town council adopted conceptual recommend, number eighteen, that basically said it concurred with the decision to proceed with the Building for the Future to the tune of one hundred and seventy million dollars. So how do we pay for it? We pay for it on, is outlined on page twenty-two, the fiscal year twenty twenty budget three weeks ago tonight. The three highlights of the fiscal year twenty twenty budget for the community, our fully funded retirement system as of July one, two thousand nineteen. I do find it funny that the council president alluded to, and thinking back, there was a lot of folks that were not thrilled that from... lot of folks that were not thrilled that from fiscal year 2009 to 2019, the Honorable Town Council appropriated 152% to the retirement appropriation. That'll be fully funded in July 1. We set up a payment plan to address the unfunded OPEC liability. And then lastly, and most importantly for tonight, the funding of the three elementary schools. As a result of that aggressive funding in the retirement system, the financing of the $170 million for the three elementary school project will begin in fiscal year 2020, and all this project will be done within confines of Proposition 2 and 1/2. Borrowing of the $170 million, it's projected to be done in phases beginning in fiscal year 20 through fiscal year 23. And we outlined that yesterday and tonight is the big first step. But the last group I wanted to mention is the taxpayers of Watertown for their support. When you think about it, this is all being done within the confines of Proposition 2 and 1/2. We're utilizing tax dollars within the confines of 2 and 1/2 to build two new schools and renovate and expand another. So, Mr. President, a prior opener for the public hearing, I respectfully request the town council's favorable consideration in moving forward with the endorsed conceptual and schematic design the school building had voted back at the end of January. The projects are part of a long-term vision of providing outstanding education, recreation, healthy neighborhoods throughout Watertown, and will serve this community for many decades. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so I now open it up for the public, for anyone that would like to make comments. Please identify yourself, John, for those that don't know who you are.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name's John Ports. I live at Robbins Road. I'm chair of the school committee. So let me just say on behalf of the school committee, I want to thank the town manager for his insight and work on making this come to the point that we have today. I want to thank the town council for all of their support in anticipation of a positive vote this evening. I want to thank the administration, the superintendent, the administration, and as the manager said, thanks also to this community. I mean, the commitment that Watertown has made to education is truly amazing. I mean, it's something to be very proud of in this community, in this town. Just a quick, and I mentioned this to the council president earlier, the superintendent and I were at a forum last night. As today evening, Senator Brownsberger put together a forum on education funding for his district, and the three communities in his district are Watertown, Belmont, and Boston. And so we made a little presentation, and we followed Boston. So Boston has a $1.2 billion budget, and then we talked. So we're kind of the little kids on the block. But it was interesting, one of the key takeaways from that meeting was very clear that the commitment in Watertown to support education is truly incredible and very impressive. I mean, Boston was complaining about all the stuff they're facing. Belmont was complaining about everything that they were facing. DeeDee and I felt guilty getting up there because we were saying, well, we have some of that. We have coaches and instructional coaches, and we have some social work. We have an incredible education system thanks to your support, the manager's support, and the town council's support. So it's really, the commitment was outstanding. I will say, as I walked out of that meeting last night, the chairman of the Boston School Committee asked if we could send a little money his way. So I was going to give him your email address.
Shut down.
But again, you know, the commitment that you're making to Watertown is great. I mean, it's on the operating budget, too, which was the focus of this meeting. It was kind of Chapter 70 foundation budget. But the commitment here tonight to the capital side, to the building side, is equally impressive, if not more so. You know, we're on a very important and exciting path. We're on the beginning of it. We've got, I'll be here more times, I think, than just this tonight. But the buildings that Scott, and I mean, thank Scott also for his work, but the buildings that he showed up on the screen here are ones that will, in ways we haven't had for a long time, support the teaching and learning that goes on in Watertown. They will support the collaboration for student learning, support collaboration for teachers. It will meet sustainability goals. They will be true assets, and I think for this community. So I'm very proud of the work that we've done so far. Thank you to the other building committee members, and thank you for your support for this project.
Just tell everybody who you are. For those that don't know, please, thank you.
So thank you. I am DeeDee Galston. I'm the superintendent of schools here in Watertown. I just want to echo the thanks to the town council, but certainly the larger Watertown community for supporting education in this monumental way. And this funding, or the potential funding, marks a major milestone for us in the building projects. And one of the strategic objectives that we have within our school system is to build educationally appropriate and joyful learning environments. And I think the initial work that we've seen from our architects and the school building committee certainly points to that high level of success with achieving that objective. But I do want to mention something, and just hearing and watching and seeing and thinking about the commitment that you've provided to education, it makes me feel deeply responsible. And so I just want to make sure that you know that a school building is only as good as the teaching and learning that happens within it. And I'm here to guarantee or promise or commit to you all on behalf of the school administration. We have principals here, our assistant superintendent, that we will ensure that what happens inside of these buildings is equally excellent, innovative, and joyful as what we've seen tonight in the presentation in these new and renovated buildings. So just thank you very much, and I take that responsibility seriously, and I promise that we will do our best to equal that. So thank you.
Anyone else wish to be heard? Seeing none, I close the public hearing, ask for a motion to discuss this, so a motion on the proposed loan order.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the loan order for $12,441,016.
Is there a second? Okay, discussion, questions. Counselor Donato.
Thank you, Mr. President. I really, there are definitely a lot of people who need to be recognized and thanked. The school building committee, I know they've met at this point well over 20 times. I have not been able to attend all of the meetings. I've tried to get to as many as possible. We're lucky to have a lot of members of the administration and town council and school committee on that, the school building committee. But the town residents who applied and interviewed for those positions are an incredibly talented group of people who have given so much of their time and talents to this committee and to the town. They deserve so much thanks. I'm always so impressed by the questions they ask, and we are really lucky to have them. We are equally lucky to have Scott involved in this project. Every meeting I've been to, there have been, you know, numerous questions, and Scott's grasp of the material is so strong that I've never seen him stumped by one question. And more importantly, as we discussed or as mentioned in the presentation, early on, there was some resident pushback to certain designs, and I could completely understand their concern. And Scott always answered all of those questions with such understanding and respect, and I think that residents really felt as though they were heard, and I think they appreciated that. So we're definitely lucky to have Scott on board. I think one question we often receive is, with all this development and all the new growth in town, where are my tax dollars going to? And it's really difficult to point to a fully funded pension system because it's not a tangible item that you can point to. And I understand that concern because I often have that concern myself. But based on what previous town councils have done with the help of the town manager and Mr. Tracy, we're going to be able to point to two brand-new buildings and one extremely renovated building, and to be able to point to the residents in town and say, that's what your tax dollars paid for, and that's what the new growth paid for. And I think that that's going to be an incredible accomplishment, especially when you consider several of our neighboring cities and towns are constantly going back to their residence for overrides for operating budget issues. And we're going to be able to build two new buildings and significantly renovate the third, all within the confines of Prop 2 and 1/2, and that is such an amazing accomplishment. I'm really looking forward to this project. I think between the school building committee and AI 3, I think we're in great hands, and I'm really excited to see the future of the school systems in Watertown. So I will definitely be supporting this tonight. Thank you.
Any other comments? Counselor Felton.
Thank you, Council President. I would just say that I am believer that the families and the schools, our education, are the lifeblood of our community, so I'll be happily supporting this and excited of all the work and everybody that's everything that's been mentioned, and feel privileged to be part of the council to be able to vote on this. Thank you.
Are there any other comments? Counselor Pitorelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is something we've been working on a long time, and I am so pleased that we're actually, at this point tonight, we're actually voting to move forward with the design for the construction. It takes, you know, to live in a great community, you need to have a vision, but it's more than just the vision. You need to have teamwork to put that vision into practice. You also need to have the discipline to sort of stick with the process and get it done. And I think what we're voting on here tonight is, you know, looking back, it almost seems, based on Scott's presentation, it seems almost too easy. And it sort of belies the effort that's gone on to this. When we started this process back in sort of 2012 with the concept of renovating our But the discipline to stick with the process, the commitment to process, and just keep moving forward and making decisions. There were a lot of hard decisions being made. One of the hardest decisions was to go from the $120 million to $153 million to $170 million. And many people in the community were very concerned about that. But it comes down to the commitment to the process to actually say what value we're going to get out of this for the community. And I think for $170 million, we're going to be creating a tremendous amount of value for this community, and we're doing it with the discipline of having the finances to make it happen. And I think that is a testament to the teamwork, not just the school building committee and the architect, but the town manager and his financial staff and the town auditor. And, you know, even going back 10 years ago, working with the Watertown Contributory Retirement Board to actually develop a funding schedule for the pension plan. And I'm not sure, there's not many people in this room who would have thought in 2008 or 2009 that the effort we put into the funding, fully funding our pension system would result in a $170 million school project without an override. But it was there, and we did it, and we had the discipline to stick with it. So I'm hoping that we can get this done, get this moving forward, and actually set the groundwork for starting the high school project, which is going to be coming faster than you think. But anyway, I could not be happier with the amount of teamwork and discipline that everyone in this town has shown. And one of the, you know, the last thing is, you know, we spend a lot of time looking at the outsides of the building, but what's going on inside the buildings, what's being proposed for the educational environment for our children is just as exciting as what you see about the outside of the building. And I know there wasn't enough time tonight to go through the inside, what's going on and proposed to the inside of the building, but that is as exciting as what you've seen for the outsides of the building. So anyway, that's, I'm so enthusiastic about moving forward with this. Thank you.
Are there any other comments? Let me just close by pointing out one thing, and teamwork is part of it, but by no means was this a, just walk into the manager's office and say, hey, Mr. Manager, we're at $170, we need the money. We had to work very hard, and the manager works very hard, and this council works very hard to protect and do the right thing for the taxpayers of this community. And the manager, after getting, sitting down with myself and Scott, was made aware that what we were getting for the increase in costs was the right thing to do for this community. So I'm really proud of that, and I think we can move forward, and this is a good night for Watertown. So can I get a roll call, please?
Counselor Pinnellis?
Yes.
Counselor Palumbo?
Yes.
Counselor Pitorelli?
Yes.
Counselor Woodland?
Yes.
Counselor Baze?
Yes.
Counselor Donato?
Yes.
Counselor Falco?
Yes.
Counselor Felton?
Yes.
President Sideris?
Yes, thank you. Thanks, Scott. Thanks to all. Thanks to all the members of the building committee, too, for being here. Okay. You're dismissed. The next item on the agenda is the committee reports. 11A is a committee on Human Services report regarding the reappointment of Richard Arnold to the Board of Health for a term to expire February 22, 2022. Counselor Palumba.
Thank you. The committee, a committee met on April 23 at 6:45 in the town council office, in attendance were myself, Counselor Baze, vice chair Susan Falkoff, Counselor Falkoff secretary Larry Random, health director Richard Arnold, the Board of Health member, and resident Claudia Thomas. The purpose of the meeting was to interview Richard Arnold for reappointment to the Board of Health. Mr. Arnold has served three-year, two three-year terms on the board and is looking forward to continuing. The greatest challenge he has faced is working on the biotechnological regulations since he is a medical professional currently serving as an administrator of student health services at UMass Boston, and the regulating laboratory work is outside his expertise. He said that the board, working with the director of the health department, is looking at the regulations of surrounding communities and the state regulations and choosing the relevant sections to create Watertown's regulations. Several experts have submitted helpful comments to the health director. The committee asked about opportunities and procedures for public input at the Board of Health meetings and compared the board's procedures to town council mechanisms. Not only that, it needs to be an opportunity for public input as well as board deliberation. Councils express the importance of the board obtaining all the information it needs for good decision-making. Counselor Falkoff made a motion to recommend to the full council approval for Mr. Arnold's reappointment with the term expiring on February, that should be read February 7 instead of February 22, 2022. Counselor Baze, second, and the motion carried 3 to 0, respectfully submitted by Counselor Susan Falkoff, secretary.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to accept the report?
Mr. President, I make a motion to accept the report amended with February 22 to read February 7.
Second.
Any discussion on the report? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And the action item, can I get a motion on the reappointment of Richard Arnold to the Board of Health?
A motion to reappoint Richard Arnold to the Board of Health for a term to expire February 7, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. 11B is the Committee on Rules and Ordinances report regarding liquor licenses for arsenal yards and their related fees. Counselor Donato.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Rules and Ordinances met on Wednesday, April 17 at 5:00 p.m. in the Philippine Hearing Room, lower level. Present were myself as chair, Counselor Kenneth Woodland, vice chair, and Counselor Lisa Felton, secretary. Also present were Andrew Coppolati from Boylston Properties, attorney Bill York, council president Mark Sideris, Counselor Palumba, Mr. David Stokes, and Charlie Bright Rose. The adj... The agenda for the evening was, one, to review the fees of liquor licenses granted pursuant to Chapter 73 of the Acts of 2016. And, excuse me, and then, number two, review, consider, and recommend appropriate legislative action in regard to the need for additional licenses for the sale of alcoholic beverages on the premises pursuant to Section 12 of General Laws, Chapter 138. I called the meeting to order by giving a brief background on the origin of the referral from President Sedaris, which was based on correspondence from Attorney York for Arsenal Yards and Cinema World, beginning late last year, copies of which are attached to the minutes. I also suggested discussing the second agenda item first. Watertown was granted the ability to issue an additional 15 liquor licenses by the State Act of 2016, which specifically allowed for eight of the 15 licenses to be issued to five specific areas within Watertown, one of which was the Arsenal Corridor Regional Malls, and now, which now includes Arsenal Yards. This was before the RMUD zoning district was created. Of these eight area-designated licenses, six remain, as two have been granted, one to Joyful Gardens Restaurant located within the Watertown Mall, and the other two Flaming Pit, which is located at 222 Arsenal Street. Given the Arsenal Yards plans to provide a larger mix of restaurant choices, they would like to secure the remaining six licenses, as well as an additional nine liquor licenses if possible. After discussion about protecting quote-unquote "traditional" restaurant-owned licenses and the timing and planning of Arsenal Yards, the Committee decided they were open to petitioning the Legislature for more liquor licenses. Counselors agreed the most expedient approach would likely be to amend the provisions of the Home Rule Petition Language and request a total of 30 liquor licenses in Section 1 and 23 licenses in Section 2. It was decided that I would consult with Attorney David Dinesky of KP Law, who's the licensing attorney for the town, and would then subsequently include this in the report to the Town Council. The Committee then began discussing liquor license fees and the differences between licenses owned by an establishment versus those added under Chapter 73 of the Act of 2016, which also stipulates that the Town Council sets the fees. But the Council did not previously deliberate or set these fees, and Watertown did not anticipate the current development project or how the needs for planning a large mixed-use project with particular leasing and financing requirements might differ. Different perspectives were shared between the Committee and attendees, including fairness to paying for a license without being able to use it for a year or more period, especially given larger construction realities, fairness to current regular quote-unquote "license owners," and fairness to small businesses, new businesses, and economic incentives. It was also noted that this is a unique situation, one that Watertown has not experienced before. Given the lack of consensus on setting fees per Chapter 73, the Committee agreed to continue this agenda item to a future meeting. Counselor Woodland made a motion to recommend the Town Council requests 15 additional liquor licenses from the State Legislature. This was seconded by Counselor Felton, and the motion passed 3 to 0. Counselor Woodland then made a motion to join the meeting on Agenda Item 2 and continue committee meeting on Agenda Item 1. This was seconded by Counselor Felton. The motion passed 3 to 0. The minutes were respectfully submitted by Lisa Felton. Attachments to the minutes are the letters previously referenced from Attorney York to Council President Sedaris, also some correspondence from Boylston Properties. And then, post-meeting that was alluded to earlier, I did have a conversation with Attorney Dinesky to confirm his previous belief that amending the Acts of 2016 would be the most appropriate course for this council to take. He responded in the affirmative. A copy of that email correspondence is attached to the minute meetings, as well as a draft of the proposed language that this council should act on, which would then, upon approval of this council, would then go forward to the State Legislature for approval. That is the report. Mr. President, I do just want to point out, on page 1 of the minutes, under Agenda 1, should read Chap. 73 of the Acts of 2016, as opposed to 2106.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to accept the report with that amendment?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
Yes. Oh, no, not on the report.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The next is, can I get a motion on the action item?
Mr. President, make a motion that the Town Council requests pursuing 15 additional liquor licenses from the State Legislature.
Is there a second? Counselor Felkoff?
Thank you, President Sedaris. So I was really shocked to read in the Watertown Mass. News that they were asking for nine additional licenses. Or is it, are the fif- okay, clarification, the 15 are all for the Arsenal project, or is it just nine for the Arsenal project?
Counselor Donato.
Mr. President, so the council was, or the Committee was very cognizant of the fact that Arsenal Yards was looking to not only take the six that remain outstanding, but they would like an additional nine. So they need a total of 15. And the concern on the Committee level was that we wanted to make sure that there were still those additional six licenses to guard against future development possibilities in the Arsenal Corridor.
So I read this, that they wanted to have 15 licenses of that project. And I was sort of shocked by the large number. And I thought that the minutes would help me understand better why they felt they needed that much drinking. And they didn't. And I'm having a hard time thinking there should be that many establishments with liquor licenses in this one place.
Counselor Woodland?
Just in response to that, the additional 15 is not designated strictly for the Arsenal area. By amending the legislation, there's a subsection 4 and Part B that highlights four different areas that could have these additional licenses. So it's not necessarily just in that one spot. But they did provide a list of the establishments that are currently seeking licenses, and a smaller list of potential license holders coming in. And it's all different types of establishments, you know, mostly restaurants and, you know, movie theater, things of that nature. But, you know, that number is kind of what they've been proposing for a little while now. But again, it just wanted to emphasize that it's opened up to more than just the Arsenal area, this number.
Counselor Felkoff?
I will be voting no. I just think that's too many licenses.
Thank you. Counselor Canelas?
Thank you. When the permitting process started for Arsenal Yards, many of you may remember my communication to the Planning Board indicating, and I quote, that this was a city within a city. And I still feel that way. And the same was true for Athena Health. Both developments wanted to entice people onto their properties, retain their employees and their prospective tenants to be on-site and to have all of the amenities. But I strongly feel that we should also be taking into consideration all of the other small establishments, excuse me, within our 4.17 square miles. Speaking for the East End, we all know the Tufts property that was formerly Prospectus, and prior to that, it was the Western Electric Building. When the property was purchased by Tufts, the merchants in Coolidge Square and the surrounding area were very excited that this would generate additional foot traffic, the employees being, going into the areas and patronizing. Didn't materialize. Then Tufts became the corporate headquarters relocating from Wallstam. More optimism that there would be more foot traffic, more people patronizing the local establishments. Maybe a little bit, but not much, not the kind of traffic that was anticipated. I have concerns for the mom-and-pop establishments in our, in our community, whether it be on the South Side, or the West End, or in the East End of Watertown. And granted, we now want the Arsenal Yards to be successful. We're into it. There's no backing out. It's certainly an area that's being developed. And we need it to be successful for the benefit of our community. But we also have to be very cognizant of what's going on in the rest of our community. We do not want to see vacant storefronts. We do not want to see establishments that have been part of our community, where the owners are residents of our community, to feel deprived and to eventually consider closing their doors. Because I have heard this. Because other establishments are hurting. So I will not be supporting the additional licenses at Arsenal Yards. This project continuously evolves, and there are changes after changes. And I think they have to, they being the developers, need to remain within the parameters that they personally established and requested of our community. Thank you.
Counselor Palumba?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to, something Counselor Woodland said that I wasn't unclear. So I'm looking at the amendment that Counselor Donato worked out with the attorney. I understood that these 15 additional licenses were for Arsenal Yards. Now, if they're, are they for the whole Armud area, or are they are for, it was unclear to me.
Mr. President?
Counselor Donato?
If you, if you, I think there had been some correspondence with Attorney Dinesky, and the question was whether or not we were going to be proposing a new Home Rule petition, or if we were going to seek to amend the existing. And the recommendation was that if we were going to just add the number town-wide, then we could do just an amendment, that that would probably be the best approach. If they were going to be specifically designated for Arsenal Yards, the suggestion was that it would be a new Home Rule petition. So the way we tried to structure the language was that those, it would be an additional 15 in-town, but by amending the language that Counselor Woodland referenced before that limited the Arsenal Corridors Mall, or however it was designated, to a maximum of eight, we amended that language as well to go up to 23, to include not only the additional licenses that Arsenal Yards thinks they might need, but we wanted to make sure that we did have a buffer, so that if there was further development on Arsenal Street, that those future restaurants would not be frozen out of the process, because Arsenal Yards would be, you know, requiring so many licenses.
So if I understand the amendment as, in the minutes, in the report, we're going for a total of 30 licenses, as amended.
Yes.
Big 30 licenses. And that 23 of those licenses would be available in-town.
So it would be, so where the 15 have already been approved?
Yes.
We're going for an additional 15. So that gives us a total of
Of 30.
30 that could be issued under the Chapter 73. But the, it's just setting the cap for the Arsenal Corridor at 23.
I got it. Thank you. Appreciate the clarification.
This also makes available the other ones for Pleasant Street and other potential new developments. We do have one specific for Pleasant Street, but there may be more than one. So, you know, I think the Committee, I went to the meeting, the Committee thought there was an opportunity. And I don't want to speak for anybody, but I do feel that this is the same kind of thing that happened in Somerville, Assembly Row, where they didn't realize that the project was going to become much more than they've originally anticipated. And I think that was why the request was made, to look at this. So.
Thank you for clarification.
Any other comments? Counselor Baze?
So I'm just trying to remember, isn't the number of liquor licenses we have, is that tied to the number of marijuana?
No.
It's not? Okay, I thought I'd remembered.
It's, yes. And the liquor licenses, the traditional liquor licenses are tied to population.
Right.
And the marijuana licenses are tied to the liquor licenses.
Right. That's what I was, that's what I was asking.
Not the way you said.
Okay, well, I meant it that way. So, so does this double?
No, this, those marijuana licenses would go only for the traditional number.
Okay. Okay.
Counselor Felton?
Well, I guess two quick points. One, somewhat to Counselor Felkoff's question. Partly why they, it seems like a lot is because they're wanting to have more variety in smaller establishments that possibly local owners or small businesses versus, you know, just a couple very large restaurants that might be part of a national change. So it's a more, provides more variety and flexibility. They may only end up needing 13, but it's a little bit of a chicken and egg between when you're building a large project and timing of the leases and their needs for getting financing. There was discussion around that. The other point is just a reminder that there's different type of liquor license. So there's the licenses that are owned by restaurants, and these are the other type where the town would still be approving. It's, in effect, the town leasing the licenses. So the town would still have a say in, you know, how and when those are issued to the establishments, if that helps.
Counselor Donato?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think Counselor Felton's point is an important one, so I would just reiterate it. I thought the way it was presented to us and as an attachment to the Committee Minutes is a kind of a synopsis of each of the restaurants that have already been signed up and that are going to be taking up leases in Arsenal Yards. And the majority of them are smaller-size restaurants. So I can understand your concern about adding an additional 15. None of these, at least based on the descriptions and the restaurants that I'm familiar with, none of them would be, you know, a quote-unquote "bar." They're all restaurants and, you know, seemingly smaller-size restaurants. To Counselor Canelas's point, I think the Committee members want to make sure that this process is fair. We understand that it seems like a large increase in the number of licenses. And I think the Council back in 2016 and its wisdom then decided that these, the different liquor licenses would have different fees. And I think that was to help protect the value of the quote-unquote "traditional" liquor license. And again, to Counselor Canelas's point, you know, we are, I am concerned about local business. I don't want to see any of the local businesses go out of business. Arsenal Yards is here, and I think we need to do all that we can to ensure the success of that project. And, you know, they've got leases for a lot of restaurants opening up. And I think allowing those restaurants the opportunity to pursue a liquor license is one that we need to provide them with. So I will be voting in favor of this tonight. Thank you.
Counselor Woodland?
Just to piggyback off that a little, I think it's important to remember that when, especially in the Pleasant Street Corridor District, when developments came forward in the 2014 timeframe, a lot of times when folks came out to meetings, they indicated they wanted mixed use. So they wanted some residential and commercial. And a strong desire for the commercial piece was a restaurant or something of that nature. So it was always going to be incumbent upon us, if we were going to fulfill that desire and that want of the community, especially in Pleasant Street area and this area, was going to be to request more liquor license, so that we can fulfill, you know, the restaurant's not going to, it would be very hard for restaurants to survive with that one. So if we're going to meet that expectation of the community and the expectations that we set on folks that are coming into town, then it is incumbent upon us to get these for them.
Okay. Can I get a roll call on this, please?
Counselor Palumba?
Yes.
Counselor Pichorelli?
Yes.
Counselor Woodland?
Yes.
Counselor Baze?
Yes.
Counselor Donato?
Yes.
Counselor Felkoff?
No.
Counselor Felton?
Yes.
Counselor Canelas?
No.
President Sedaris?
Yes, thank you. The motion passes. We'll get that off to our state delegation. 11C is the Committees on Public Works and Human Services Report Regarding Parking and Access Issues to Phillipello Park, including the area known as Glen Circle. Counselors Pichorelli, who's the Chair of Public Works, and Counselor Palumba, Chair of Human Services, and I guess Counselor, okay, Pichorelli is going to read the report.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the Joint Committees met Monday, May 6. Myself, Chair of Public Works, Counselor Palumba, Vice Chair of Public Works, Counselor Woodland, Secretary of Public Works, and the Human Services Committee with Counselor
Woodland, Secretary of Public Works, and the Human Services Committee with Counselor Palomba, Chair of Human Services, Counselor Baze, Vice Chair, and Counselor Falcoff, Secretary. The purpose of the meeting was to continue to discuss and develop policy guidance regarding parking and access issues surrounding Philippiello Park, including the area formerly known as Glen Circle. Mr. McGoon started the meeting by presenting the staff's response to the eight questions brought up by the joint committees at the prior meeting. Mr. McGoon also mentioned that while not the focus of the eight questions, the staff did discuss some additional signage and marking improvements for the area. Number one, these are the eight questions that we had asked, that, number one, confirm whether or not Glen Circle has a deed restriction or other obligations that would prevent the area from being used for parking. The staff is continuing to look at this issue. Number two, whether it makes sense to increase the parking duration on the surrounding streets above the one-hour limit. Staff noted that this is under the jurisdiction of the Traffic Commission. Additionally, there's no history of why the parking duration is what it is today, but there is no objection to making it the same as other parts of the town. Number three, information about the feasibility of a pilot permit parking program in this area in light of the current parking situation and other relevant regulations. Staff noted that significant staffing implications in setting up, administering, and enforcing such a program. Additionally, there are concerns that similar programs would want to be established throughout the other similar areas of the town. Also, there is a general concern about reserving this area for butters and the potential windfall that would result for those residential properties. There's an open question as to whether or not such an act would be appropriate disposition of public property. Number four, information about the feasibility of reserving Glen Circle for resident parking only with assigned parking spots. Staff noted these concerns were covered in question three above. Number five, whether we can completely close the gate between Glen Circle and Philippiello Park. Staff noted that closing the gate would create concerns for users of the park and limit access, which we want to encourage. For example, there could no longer be drop-off and pickup in this area if the gate is permanently closed. Number six, is it possible and does it make sense to reconfigure the streets so there's one-way traffic through Glen Circle from Berkeley Street to Clarendon Street? Staff noted this would not add significant parking. Whether or not the traffic flow would be benefited was also discussed and would need further research. Number seven, ask the administration for options to provide additional parking for users of Philippiello Park that relieves the burden on the Berkeley Street and Clarendon Street neighborhood. Staff noted they are examining options with a goal of additional parking for the park. And number eight, clarify whether the Grove Street parking lot of Philippiello Park is available for overnight parking during the winter parking ban. The DPW and police noted that this is not on the official list of lots, but is somewhat treated as such. However, there's little use. Staff noted there are some safety implications regarding lighting if the town were to allow parking there at night. The joint committees then discussed the staff recommendations with a series of clarification questions. Counselor Canelis then spoke regarding the 1983 Town Council Resolution to close the gate that allows access to Philippiello Park from Glen Circle. Counselor Canelis also spoke about the community benefits that would result from reaffirming the resolution, among other related issues. Members of the public spoke next. Issues concerned dissatisfaction with the council's response to residential concerns, handicap parking, parking availability in general, safety issues particularly related to speeding, noise from park users congregating in the area, and the neighborhood request for closing the gate between Philippiello Park and Glen Circle. A resident provided photos of parking in the area showing many cars parked on Arlington Street while the Grove Street parking lot was empty. Counselor Palomba and Counselor Baze said they support closing the gate, providing the other side of, providing the other side of Grove Street as overnight parking, and doing a pilot resident parking permit program. Counselor Falcoff mentioned she's inclined to support closing the gate and other general improvements, but not sure if resident parking permit program is needed just yet. Counselor Woodland noted that we should seek objective evidence to substantiate the safety concerns before making policy decisions. Mr. Santola noted additional lighting was recently added to the Grove Street parking area and other related renovations that are happening in the park. Counselor Canelis spoke commending the petition of residents and against a parking permit program. Counselor Pichorelli closed by noting the general history and process of the issues at hand, including how seriously the Town Council takes vehicle and pedestrian safety, and supported closing the gate for both safety reasons and out of respect for the policy the Town Council voted in 1983. Counselor Palomba made a motion, seconded by Counselor Falcoff, to ask the full Town Council to direct the administration to close the gate that allows access to Philippiello Park from Glen Circle. The vote was four to one with Counselor Woodland voting no. Mr. Meag confirmed that if the gate were to be closed, the sidewalk inside the park to the gate would also be removed. Counselor Falcoff made a motion, seconded by Counselor Palomba, to ask the full Town Councils to direct the administration to allow winter parking in the Grove Street parking lot, but not in the parking spaces along the driveway. The motion passed unanimously. Mr. Meag confirmed that the parking spaces along the driveway could not be used for winter parking because they would interfere with the operation of the snow dump, and that signs would be installed advising where winter parking would be allowed. Counselor Falcoff made a motion, seconded by Counselor Palomba, to ask the full Town Council for referral to the Committee on Public Works to address signage, striping, lighting, stormwater, and landscaping at the Glen Circle parking area. The motion passed unanimously. Mr. Meag confirmed the design for upgrading the Glen Circle parking area would be handled within the capital improvement program and not the DPW operating budget. Counselor Falcoff made a motion, seconded by Counselor Palomba, to ask the full Town Council to ask the Traffic Commission to look at the possibility of adding a drop-off and pickup location on Arlington Street for Philippiello Park. The vote was four to one with Counselor Woodland voting no. The joint committee decided not to take action on any of the remaining items. The meeting adjourned at 9:15, and the report was prepared by Counselor Woodland. So thank you for doing that so promptly.
Can I get a motion to accept the report? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Counselor Falcoff.
Yeah, in the last of the motions, we had talked about changing the word "possibility" to "advisability," and it might seem like a small point, but I think there wasn't consensus that it was a good idea, but we wanted to raise the issue with the Traffic Commission, and "advisability" seemed like a better word for that reason. So I'd like to propose that we amend it with that word change.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that amendment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You guys have it. Continued discussion on the report itself? Counselor Donato?
I just had two questions, and I apologize because I was not able to make this for the earlier meeting. The question six that was posed to staff about reconfiguring the street to one-way traffic, the answer seems to be related to parking, but it was my, or my impression after the first committee report that making it one-way had something to do with the flow of traffic and to prevent people from speeding through that area. Am I mistaken?
There was quite, there was quite, there was quite a bit of discussion about that, and it was decided after much discussion that it really didn't make sense, so the committee decided to just drop it.
And if I could ask one more question, I guess I'm just a little concerned, I understand the neighbors want to close off the gate, and it seems to be that there's some support for that. I guess the only question I had was if we open up the Grove Street parking lot to overnight parking during the winter, and that gate is closed off, is that going to make it more difficult for those residents to reach the Grove Street parking area? I don't know if that was addressed at the meeting, but that was a concern that I had.
Through you, Mr. President. Yes, that actually was, there are, there is a parking lot that goes right up to Arlington Street, right around the corner, and nobody seemed to think it was an issue to just walk up and around.
I can comment on that.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Baze.
The residents were fine with walking around. They have to walk much further right now, because they're parking way far away, so.
Counselor Falcoff.
Mr. Santola informed the committees that lighting had been improved, and he felt that it was now really adequate for that purpose.
Counselor Felton.
Hi, thank you. I just wanted a clarification, just on the wording, it said that, oh shoot, about, I can't remember where it is on here, but that we wanted to activate, that in closing wouldn't activate it, the way the wording was, or is it opposite? I think in number, yeah, number five, whether we can completely close the gate. Staff noted, gate, closing would create concerns for users of the park and limit access, which we want to encourage. So we want to encourage access, or are we wanting to limit access?
Well, the committee voted to limit the access by closing the gate. The committee's recommendation is to close the gate, which limits the access.
In other words, yeah, so you want to discourage, not encourage?
No, the staff, the staff was advocating, it appears from the report, to encourage and keep the gate open.
Yes.
The committee chose not to go in that road, that direction.
Okay, I was trying to.
The committee went against the recommendation of the staff.
Okay.
Did I get that?
Yes.
Okay.
It was a robust discussion.
Counselor Canelis, again, on the report, please.
Thank you. On the report, following up on item number five, the discussion was from the staff that they would want to encourage access to the park, and that was the same scenario that was brought forward in 1999, when the access point was opened. There is no physical gate, it's just an access point. When the Town Council Resolution was written in 1983, it was written that the access point would not exist because it would be detrimental to the neighborhood. Then in 1999, which was the redevelopment and improvement of the park.
Counselor, on the report, please.
Yeah, thank you.
That's not on the, okay.
Item number five, encourage or discourage.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on the report itself? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The action items. Number one, I need a motion.
So, Mr. President, I make a motion that the Town Council directs the administration to close the gate that allows access to Philippiello Park from Glen Circle.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Counselor Woodland.
So I'm always perplexed when we have these, not seemingly large issues, almost everything we did tonight, I think, is significantly more important than the vote, than this vote that we'll take right now. But this theme keeps coming up, and it's the theme that irks me more than this particular issue. But on the issue itself, we have a municipal parking area that's next to a park and a field, and the proposal tonight is to shut that. So if you were going to go park in the municipal lot that's next to the park, you wouldn't be able to access it unless you scale the fence. So that's the vote tonight, and I think it's really important for me to put that in very clear terms for the public, because I think when you put it in those terms, it sounds ridiculous that we're looking to close it. I think more along the lines of what I want to talk about was just that the committees keep getting in this idea of doing what's easy as opposed to doing what's right. I do not believe that this is being proposed tonight for any other reason that, any justified reason, except the folks in the area don't want people driving down that road to park in that area. And that's not a good enough reason to close this gate and have an impact on this park. There were folks brought up safety issues of people racing down streets, which were not substantiated. I used to play softball there, and I've driven down that street a million times, you know, played in that park my whole life. I've never seen anything to that effect. But because there were a lot of folks in the room that advocated that position, and no one in the room said contrary, it was easy for people on the committee to say, you know what, we're just going to do that. We keep coming to the situation where we make these easy decisions over the decisions that are right. And this isn't the first time we've done it, but it's a constant theme that keeps happening. The right thing to do would be to hold this gate open, so that people can go from the municipal parking lot to the municipal park. It seems very straightforward to me. If someone had asked me six months ago if the council would ever consider something like this, I probably would have laughed. So that's why I took my vote the way I did. We don't have any substantiated evidence that this is a detriment. A lot of folks came out and said to that effect. Without, we've, I mean, the committee didn't look at it. Committee didn't say, hey, you know, Police Department, can you talk about your experience in the area? You know, DPW, how this will affect your operations? You know, Mr. Santola, what do you think the park user is going to be, their response is going to be to this? None of those considerations. So the folks in the room said this is our easy fix, and the committee said yes, because we'll take the easy route. And so I, I mean, this, it's four to one on the committee level. I don't think this spiel is going to go anywhere. I have no illusions that this is going to be voted against this evening, but, I mean, I guess I just wanted the public to know that that's the most basic terms. I think it's ridiculous, but I'm even more concerned about the precedent that it sets moving forward. Thank you.
Any other comments? Counselor Canelis?
Thank you. As many of you know, I've been advocating for this for a long time. Not advocating because I'm a resident of Berkeley or Clarendon Street, advocating for it because my constituents are there. These are the people, these are the taxpayers of Watertown who reside there. This parking area existed prior to Philippiello Park. We cannot forget that. It's part of the material that it's been handed out and rehanded out to the sitting Town Council and previous Town Councils. The parking area was pre-existing. Its, Berkeley and Clarendon Streets are a very unique neighborhood. I think if a property opened up, maybe some of my colleagues would like to reside there and be part of the park neighborhood. It's a lovely neighborhood, wonderful residents of Watertown, and I would have no problem residing there myself. Many of my friends who I went to school there, resided there. I don't think we're setting precedent. I've seen this council chamber packed with people lobbying for a specific interest, not necessarily a neighborhood interest, possibly other interests that they've lobbied for. And yes, the sitting Town Council possibly will cave because they don't want to be part of the no vote, while many times I am. I do have a backbone to do that. I hope that my colleagues support the residents of Clarendon and Berkeley Street, and also support the Town Council of 1983, who wrote the resolution, indicating that the access point should remain closed because there would be an infringement on the neighborhood. And two of the then-town sitting, sitting Town Councilors were East Enders, Mr. Louis Andrews and Mr. John De Liberto, and they knew exactly what it was like to be an East Ender. They had relatives, they had friends in the Berkeley-Clarendon Street area. They knew what it was all about, and that's why the resolution was written. It would be detrimental to the neighborhood to have access to the park. And I've stated this repeatedly, I've brought it forward, the administration knew about the 1983 Resolution, many other people didn't, including myself. That resolution came to me after the fact. I was not aware of it in 1999, when the access point was opened. The '83 Resolution was part of the Philippiello Park package of material in the planning office. I think it was disrespectful to the Town Council of 1983 and disrespectful to the residents that it was allowed to happen. So I hope that my colleagues will see the information before them, understand the plight of the residents in the area, and act accordingly. Thank you.
Counselor Felton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know if Mr. Santola wants to speak to this, but I just want to be clear that I know what I think I'm talking about, the access point is you would go in Berkeley or Clarendon, and there's that parking in the back, and my memory from Hosmer School days is that you, there's the shelter there with the water and the bathrooms and the grills. So if people don't access in there, because we always had like our end-of-year parties, how do, how do people get to that? Can you drive, can you remind me if you can drive up and drop people off there?
Counselor Pichorelli?
There's plenty of attachments.
There's plenty of attachments that were as part of the package, but you could, you could drop, well, you could certainly drop people off in the Grove Street parking lot and walk up the walkway to that area. You could park along Arlington Street, and there is sort of a large area along Arlington Street that's posted as no parking, that people use as a informal drop-off and pickup location, which was sort of the fourth recommendation that we had there. If I could, Mr. President, just, just to follow up on that, this committee, we spent a lot of time looking at this, we looked at a lot of things, and these four recommendations are all sort of intend to work together as a, as a suite of solutions to solve the problems around the area. Not any one of them in its own is, is the silver bullet that's going to solve the problem or is just the easy decision to make, but, but we actually looked at all four of them. So, so all four of the recommendations, I think, are important to be considered as a complete package, even though we're voting on them separately, to sort of solve the problem once and for all in this area and hopefully restore some harmony to both the residents who live in the area and the users of the park. So that's my view of that.
So, as a follow-up, I guess, I just, it's hard to get a sense of what staff thinks in voting on this, given that there's going to be further research about adding other parking and how that might affect the ability to, whether it's small children or safety issues or burden on the neighbors, or, you know, ADI, access, et cetera. So it's difficult for me, one, knowing that the staff would rather have the gate be open, to vote on it closed, but also we've asked, the action item is asking for more information or alternatives that we're not sure what they're going to discover yet, so I'll just put that out there.
This is the action item that's in front of the council this evening?
Right.
You're entitled to vote no if you don't agree with it?
I was just letting you know that...
You can, you can let, but this is the action items that the committee came up with.
Okay.
We can't change that. Counsel Baze?
So, Counsel Woodland is right. In a perfect world, we could study this and, and come up with a solution based on the study, but if we studied every single gate that needed to be closed, we probably couldn't have made the vote that we did earlier tonight. We, we don't have a perfect world where we can study every single decision we make. So, all we had to go on was what the residents were telling us was happening in that area. And they were telling us that it was unsafe, that they felt it was unsafe. And, and people were being picked up and dropped off, and other cars were whizzing around them, as little kids were getting in and out of cars. It, it did not feel like a safe situation, and, and that's what we had to go on. So that's why we made that decision.
Are there any other comments? I'm going to wrap this up, or I'm going to put this at another meeting, because we're getting late. Counsel Canelus?
Just to reference the access to the...
Six of you were on the committee.
Just to access the grills, that was referenced earlier by Counsel Felton, the grills are accessed from the Grove Street parking lot.
Counsel Woodland?
Just to follow up on the, doing a study piece, the example I gave during the committee meeting was a safety speeding study that I did on Acton Street in between Jensen and Rosedale. And what the residents there said was people were speeding. I asked the police to go down and do a study. They went down and did one. They found that statistically, the speeding was not happening. They did a study over a several-week period, they came back with these standards conclusions that are based on the national ways that they look at these figures, adjusting for speed. Long story short, we didn't move forward with putting up a speed bump or other mitigation because there was no statistical evidence or objective evidence to support that. So we do not have that in this situation. So it is possible to get, and we have gotten it in the past, and that used to help us be informed about our decision-making.
Counsel Palomba?
Counsel Donato? Thank you, Mr. President. I can understand Counsel Wood, uh, Woodland's concern about closing off access to a municipal park from a municipal parking lot. I think what I would say is if we do close access, it's not going to prohibit any other residents from parking there. You know, it might make their walk into the park a little longer, but I think if, that's a good balancing act, if it gives the, the neighborhood a little bit of a relief and it just, you know, yes, it might be an inconvenience, but in the grand scheme of things, it seems to me as though it would be a slight inconvenience to walk around to Arlington Street, so I'm going to vote in favor of closing access.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Counsel Pichorelli?
Yes.
Counsel Woodland?
No.
Counsel Baze?
Yes.
Counsel Donato?
Yes.
Counsel Falco?
Yes.
Counsel Felton?
Present.
Counsel Canelus?
Yes.
Counsel Palomba?
Yes.
President Stieris?
Yes.
Action item number two, please.
Mr. President, I make a motion that the town council directs the administration to allow winter parking in the Grove Street parking lot, but not in the spaces along the driveway.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Number three.
Mr. President, I make a motion that the town council makes a referral to the Committee on Public Works to address signage, striping, lighting, stormwater, and landscaping at the Glen Circle parking area.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item number four.
Mr. President, I ask that the town council asks the Traffic Commission to look at the advisability of adding a drop-off and pickup location on Arlington Street for Philippiello Park.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Counsel Woodland?
The reason I voted no to this was because, one of the reasons the committee indicated they wanted to close the gate was because they didn't want a pick-off, pickup and drop-off location at Glen Circle because of safety issues. But now we're asking to consider a pickup, drop-off on Arlington Street, which is 100 times busier. So, just the, the ridiculousness of that is why I voted no, and why I'll be opposing this tonight. It couldn't be any more contradictory to the central theme of the last argument.
Counsel Canelus?
Thank you. I did not have a vote on this, certainly at the committee level, but it's up to the Traffic Commission to review. I do not have the expertise, but I don't think that it would be appropriate on Arlington Street. It's a, it's a very busy roadway. The Grove Street parking lot, I think, is the most appropriate. Young people are there to play sports, so they can walk from the Grove Street parking lot across the fields. It's exercise, it's sport. Thank you.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
One opposed. Thank you. Let me just say that there were several other committee reports that didn't make this agenda because there were really no action items. We will be placing them on a future agenda. As you can see, we're trying to manage our time a little bit. New business? Any new business to come before the council?
We're not allowed to do new business.
Pardon me?
We're not allowed to.
You can, you can say that you're going to bring something up next week.
Well, I'm not.
Okay. Communications from the town manager, and first thing is a request for confirmation of appointment and reappointment to the Watertown Housing Authority. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council, again, bringing forward tonight a request for appointment and reappointment to the Watertown Housing Authority, which requires council confirmation. The appointment would be as follows. Patricia Santos, who will be the tenant representative at 100 Warren Street, apartment 301, her term would go to May 15, 2023. And the reappointment would be Shannon Lyon at 20 Pilgrim Road, and her term would go to May 15, 2024. Under the council rules, both the appointment and reappointment are referred to the Committee on Human Services for their review and report back to the full town council.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Anything else?
Just two items. One is, a week from today starts the modified hours of operation administration building. It'll be open Monday, Wednesday, Thursday will be at the 8:30 to 5:00, but on Tuesdays it'll be 8:30 to 7:00 p.m., and then Fridays would be 8:30 to 2:00 p.m., and that schedule will be in effect till Friday, August 30th. And additionally, two notes on the Memorial Day, that the administration will be closed, Observance Memorial Day, and then, more importantly, the town's annual Memorial Day parade will be held on Monday, May 27, starting at noon at the Grove Street East End, and certainly looking forward to everyone attending. Mr. President?
Thank you. Request for information. Any requests for information? Seeing none announcements. Any announcements? Public forum. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.